I read an article by the Heritage Foundation at, and you can find it at www.heritage.org, which gave each state a score on their election scorecard. The state voter laws were analyzed and given a grade based on how well they protect the integrity and security of the election process. I was surprised to see South Dakota received a 62 out of 100 for a failing grade. Among the reasons for the failing grade were, excuse me, voter ID implementation, accuracy of voter lists, vote harvesting restrictions, verification of citizenship, election litigation procedures, and restricting of private funds of election officials or government agencies, which we know Lincoln County took money from, or Zuckerbucks, that's what we call it. In our search for South Dakota voter integrity, we have uncovered the following potential problems with the election systems. Drop boxes is number one. Drop boxes have been proven to be a mechanism for voter fraud and ballot harvesting. These boxes are not secure and do not need to be placed outside the courthouse for any reason. Is it against the law to have drop boxes? SDCL 1219-7 addresses returning absentee ballots. It states, "The voter shall either mail the ballot, deliver the ballot in person, or have it delivered to the person in charge of the election." I am here today to ask you, the commissioners, to please remove the Lincoln County drop boxes immediately. Two is voter registration database. A key problem in South Dakota is verifying that the person registered to vote is actually a South Dakota resident. If they don't have to produce a South Dakota driver's license or a proof of current address, who is verifying residency? We have discovered voters on the rolls that are potentially over 140 years old. Is the auditor's office keeping up with death records? Three is electronic equipment. Anything electronic can be connected to the internet. Anything connected to the internet can be hacked. Lincoln County has electronic tabulating machines. These ESNS tabulating machines have been proven in other states to be unknowingly connected to the internet and easily manipulated, even if they ordered ones that were not supposed to be connected to the internet. Has anyone on this commission or in the auditor's office verified by physical inspection that our machines were indeed not connected to the internet? Our group would like to see these tabulating machines removed, hand count only, with poll watchers from all parties closely observing the count. Poll books, electronic poll books are the key to stealing and manipulating votes. Electronic poll books have little to no security, have proven to slow down check-in process on election days, and diminish local oversight. Our group advocates for paper poll books only and human verification. Excuse me. Our group promotes paper ballots only, voting in person on election day, limited absentee ballots, and no electronic machines, period. Lastly, we do care and are concerned with the allocation of funds towards elections expenses. We believe election funds should be carefully considered when distributed. We believe the constituents should know how the funds are going to be allocated so there is room for public input. The biggest concern of mine personally is the power of the auditor to enact change and expenditures for voting processes without having the public have any knowledge or input into these changes. We propose open communication between the auditor's office, the county commission, with the residents of Lincoln County. Let's work together to protect and preserve free and fair elections for South Dakota for generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Does anybody else from the public, excuse me, does anybody else from the public wish to speak today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Do any commissioners have informational presentations to make to the commission or the public at this time? Okay, hearing none. Does anybody hear that noise? If you're on the phone, would you please mute your phone, please? Thank you. Sounded like a clock ticking.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we can move on with the business of the people. Okay, regular business. Our first agenda item is a presentation by our guest, Dick Strasberg, from Tegra Group regarding project management. Mr. Strasberg, welcome to the commission meeting today, and the floor is yours.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Dick Strasberg with the Tegra Group, a real estate consulting firm, and I've got a presentation here that I'll spin through to kind of guide us through the process. All right. So as I mentioned, I'm Dick Strasberg, and I'm co-founder of the Tegra Group. If I can tell just a little background on myself, and I can talk about some of the services that we offer. So first, I was born and raised in South Dakota, born in Brookings, raised on a farm just between the Toronto and the Brant exit. And I graduated from Clare Lake, and then went on to North Dakota State. SDSU didn't have architecture a lot of years ago, and so I went to North Dakota State, got a degree in architecture. And when I got out of college, I was raised on a farm, and we didn't take a lot of family vacations. I wanted to see the ocean, and I went to, I'd seen the mountains once, wanted to get out and see the world, so moved to Colorado. And when I got out there, I got registered as an architect. And then one of our clients was a real estate developer, and they offered me a job, and it was in Los Angeles. I thought, okay, this is great, I get out and see the world. And plus, I looked at it at that time, and I looked at South Dakota, it's like, who would ever live here? It's so cold, and the wind blows, and you know, all this. And then I got to Los Angeles, and I kind of figured out, South Dakota looked really pretty good. So then, something when I was in Los Angeles that I saw as a developer, I saw tenants come along that were the big tenants, the big national, you know, we did a lot of big military kind of work and big corporate work. And we saw that those groups, they had in-house architects, they had in-house contractors, they had people with those backgrounds, they had lawyers, they had people, you know, they were all ready to go. Then we'd work with other ones that were smaller, they didn't have a clue. They didn't know, they didn't have all that, they weren't equipped with all those people to surround them. And that's where I came up with the idea of Tegra. Let's go, let's create a group just like that. Let's get it so we've got people with backgrounds in interior design, backgrounds in construction and architecture, and you know, accounting and law. And let's get, let's go, let's have a group that does that for the small and midsize organizations, both public and private, that don't have those services. So started Tegra in 1996, and we're just order reps, that's all we do. We aren't contractors, we only represent end users. We don't provide any of the services. Now, we happen to have backgrounds in these different professions, but we've learned that it's, those backgrounds are really helpful. We have a requirement, anybody in our office has at least 10 years practicing in, you know, either in, you know, one of those areas before they come to Tegra. We have that as a rule, but I think in reality, it's more like 15. We have eight professionals, we started with six. I could kind of run through it, and you get a pretty good idea about our company just by the backgrounds. I mentioned my background. Nate Pearson is a, has a construction management degree from Iowa and an MBA. He was one of the, on the executive leadership of Mortson Construction, had came with 17 years of experience. And the projects he's worked on here, he just, one of the reasons I can stand here and be kind of interested in this job is because he just finished the monument out in Rapid City, and he led that project. He also did locally, he did the Midco Aquatic Center, he did Washington Square across from Washington Pavilion, and has been involved in some others as well. We've got Naomi Burchette, she's an architect, and she's, she was kind of my right-hand person, we did Danny Sanford Premier Center. And we got Paul Kerber, he's been with us for, almost since we started, and he has a banking background. He has a, first, he's got an MBA in real estate finance, and he's our numbers guy and real estate guy, and has a real, real strong, strong background there. And something I should mention, too, we work as a team. So if we're hiring, you know, a contractor, we have the guys that have construction backgrounds, you know, write the RFPs, analyze the RFPs, be at the interviews, you know, and really actively manage them. And if it's like on the construction, or the real estate, the finance, the front-end side of it, we've got Paul Kerber, he's involved with that. So we work as a team, we each take our own specialties. But we have one person who's the lead, that you know, kind of covers the whole, you know, is responsible for bringing other people in on it. On your project, that would be me. We've got Julie, she's a civil engineer by background, and worked for a contractor for 15 years before she came to Tegra. Mark is a CPA. Connie is, she does everything that, I think at one of your meetings, someone mentioned that, you know, if you tip a building upside down and everything falls out, in our case, it falls on her plate. She does everything that's FFNE and everything that's, all the details on it. She's been involved in, I think, pretty much everything we've done in South Dakota, just finishing up the monument, did all the FFNE out there. And we've got Mike Van Kline, who's a newer team member. He was a project manager on the Minnehaha County Jail. And he was a real sharp guy, he's got a construction management degree, MBA, and you know, I think it's fair to say, anyone that we have on our team, we've probably worked with them first, because we can kind of pick the cream of the crop when we're working with these different projects. One thing we've got in common, we didn't do this on purpose, but we're all from small towns or farms, with one exception, we've got one Green Bay Packer, guy that's from Milwaukee. Everybody else is from small towns. Mike Van Kline, for example, he was Laverne, Connie was Mitchell. So, okay, so then, in terms of what, you know, what does an order rep do, and what benefits do we have? We're basically an extension of your team, you know, or extension of your staff during the time of the project. And that's how we set up the project, the group, where that's what we do. We are that, we're an extension of your staff, we work like that. And, you know, we work for usually typically the commission, oftentimes, you know, a couple of people that are, you know, appointed on to focus on the project. And oftentimes, the auditor gets involved, too. Between the auditor and the attorney, we're pretty closely with both of them as well. We've got these backgrounds and educations, and what we've learned from that is that when we're managing architects, we're managing contractors, and you know, managing this process, and even on the front end, you know, with some of the CPA or, you know, that kind of, that kind of background, we've got pretty good credibility with those people, because we've been in their roles, so we know how to manage them, because we were on the other side of the table before we stepped into this role. Same with on the development side, when we're analyzing development, a proposal, well, you know, I was on that side, that for quite a few years, so we understand that. We work with developers on private sector projects routinely. Then what we do is, we kind of come in and level the playing field. As I mentioned, when I was working out in Los Angeles, I saw these groups that would come in that, you know, and I, you know, you get to be friends with the people you're working with, and here we are. Here, I'm working for the developer, my responsibility is to the investors that owned our company. And what I realized is, you know, example on that was a mechanical system. Well, you know, we put in the lowest cost system up front. Now, it had the highest operating cost, but that wasn't our concern, that's the tenant's concern. And I just thought, someone should be representing the end user, because we saw it with the big companies, they came in and they had their, they had mechanical engineers, they had people that knew that kind of thing, so they'd be, so then it was more, it was leveled. But when we got to the smaller and midsize organizations, it wasn't. That's kind of what, it bugged me, because here I am, I'm trying to be an honest man, and here I am. It's like, it just really is this conflict. And it's not that the developer are bad guys, they're doing it to make money, and that's what they do. And they take big risks, they take real big risks. But as a, if you're going to have a lower-end mechanical system, for example, you should know it. You should know it and kind of know the pros and cons on it. So then, what it results in, we can do what we call experience-based recommendations. It's just, we've, you know, we may not be the smartest people on the planet, but you know, after you've done anything 100 times, you kind of start to figure it out. So that's kind of how we work. We've got, you know, we don't design the buildings, we aren't experts at, you know, on, in this case, in the local examples, on building an arena, or the aquatic center, or a jail, we aren't expert on those things. Now, we have done, we've done all those. But it's really, we hire the teams that know how to do them, but we manage the process. So really, in our case, you're really hiring someone like us to manage the process, and we just represent your interests. We're always, if there's, you know, we don't do work for contractors, architects, subcontractors, we just represent your interests. We don't, on land, we are licensed real estate brokers, but we only represent the one side. We don't list any property, we're always on the buy side, or on the, you know, on the tenant side of its lease transaction. And so I think what you benefit, the benefit is, we've got a project number system in our office, and we've got, we're at, we've done 245 projects. And so every one of those has got, you know, an architect selection, a contractor selection, so I suppose we've written, combined, there are, I don't know, 500 RFPs or something in the last 26 years. And if you look at the number, you can divide by the number of years in business, you can kind of see, we do probably about 10 projects a year. And that's, and they're not all big projects, there are some are smaller projects, and kind of a whole variety on it. So if we look at the projects that we've done, we did the Minnehaha County Jail, now in that case, we started when it was, they hadn't sold the bond, but it was, everything was moving in that direction, and they had, they were, they were already through the real, what's called kind of the tangled part of these projects of getting everybody on the same page to do it. We did Black Hills Energy out in Rapid City, and just completed the monument project like I mentioned. Midco Aquatic Center, some South Dakota examples there, Danny Sanford, Premier Center, Allianz Field is a soccer stadium. We did, oh, we also did Target Field, I guess they didn't put that on here, but that was, took, had three years of my life that I, people talk about working 24/7 and seven days a week, and that was what I actually did. Hardly saw my wife and kids for three years, but I think I learned more on that project than they think, 550 million, a big project. We did like Watertown, the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, we're also currently doing their ice arena right now, just getting going, we're in the design phase there. And like on Target Center, we did their 100-plus million dollar renovation. So we've done a lot of work, we've done a lot, a lot of projects, we've done other things here in the state. And all my work is South Dakota, that's 100%. The only one that got, that's an exception to it, is we may have one in Fairmont, because it's on the way here. And so all my work is South Dakota. And something I learned is, after doing projects, I mean, literally all over the country, I learned that, you know, there's something about South Dakota here that's, it looks pretty good after all. The people here are wonderful people, so that's why I'm doing it at this stage. Plus, I'm 62 years old, and at this stage of my life, I kind of want to do what I want to do, and that's why I'm where I want to be. My wife has told me, said, you know, you're probably the happiest you've ever been in your career, because I'm doing what I want to do and doing where I want to do it. Okay, then, in terms of the decisions you have, I'm going to just run through some of the things, all the, the reason you're feeling like it's such, it's so tangled right now is you're, you know, you got a lot on your plate, you're trying to decide these things. And you've got, you've got to decide, what are the most pressing needs? Is it the courts? Is it sheriff's office? Is it the jail? Or some combination of that? And then, you know, what's, what's the timeline of solutions if you don't do it? If you don't do, you know, if, take the jail. If you don't do the jail, well, when will you do the jail? Or you'll be building somebody else's jail? But at the same time, I mean, then you try and size it, any of these, you try and size it, right? And how many years are you going to expand, you know, plan for the expansion? I use the example of a young family. You know, they get married, and you know, they know they're, they want to have kids, and they want to have a family. Well, they can't afford to go buy their, you know, four-bedroom house and everything, so they start out with something that they either kind of have to expand or change, because they just plain can't afford it. And that's usually where it hits with this, there's that balance there. And also, how confident are you in the growth projections? I mean, this is, you've experienced growth, it's, you know, phenomenal growth, and how confident are you that that's going to continue? And then you've got, somehow you've got to balance this out, because with the budget, I mean, I don't know, I didn't track your campaigns, but you know, some of you probably ran on the things that aren't going to increase taxes. Okay, well, how do we balance all that? How do we get through that? Because it's, what's an acceptable level of tax increase? And what's your, you know, other debt? We can kind of look at those assumptions there of, you know, what all do you have? What are those factors? So you've got to find that balance. And then, it sounds like there may be consensus to build it here in Canton, which would be great, if you've got that. But I don't know that that's absolute, but I've, I just listened to your last one of the videos, and it kind of sounded that way. But then you've got the shortlist of sites to be considered, you know, and how much, how much land is needed on financing? Do you do geo-bonds? Do you do the capital lease? Do you do the third-party lease? All, you know, pretty big decisions. You know, what's the term of the bonds? What's the term of the lease? You've got, interest rates are, you know, from listening to Tom, you know, interest rates likely are, he thinks are going to go up, so you kind of got that pressure on the timeline. And you got, you know, what's the role of your citizens committee, your courthouse committee? What's their role? Are they involved in the design meetings? Who from the, of the commissioners are involved? And how do you do that? And, you know, when do you engage the broader community? You know, does the community know that you, what you pay for, what you're paying every year for housing your inmates elsewhere? And, you know, it's kind of an education process and bringing the public in, and learn there's ways to do it and ways not to do it. And what, when, and how do you do that? How do you communicate to the public? And how do you, how do you inform the public? So, when I get into the design, who's, who are the decision makers? Is it all five of you? Is it, is it the committee? And what existing contractual commitments do you have? Citizen committee involvement with the team selection? Typically, they are. Do you have a local participation? We had an interesting one there with Watertown. They had three contractors, and they kind of quickly narrowed it down to two. And what was interesting is, both of them were competitive, they were very equal on cost, and they were both very good. They were both, it was really a, you know, if I was on the, that side of it, we don't vote, we don't vote. We just set you guys up so you vote on it, and we will give you the questions to ask, and we'll drill into the, we'll read through all the proposals, and, you know, have you ask questions if there's things that are missing and things you want to know. So we kind of do all that kind of work for you, but you're the ones that, at the end of the day, it's your money, so you've got to, you're entrusted to, you know, with taxpayers' money, so you've got to decide, you know, make that decision, but we can help set it up for you. And at the end of the day, what they did, they had a contract that was, they had a local partner, and the other one that didn't, they went with the one that had the local partner. And that was the reason they went with that firm. So some communities, that's a, that's a big deal. You know, and how best do you obtain cost estimates? Because we're in a time now, as you've heard others say, with all this cost escalation, I mean, how best do we handle that? So, this is where, this is a chart that we have, that is where we typically come into a project, right? So this shows kind of what you're in right now. You're bumping each other, you've got different opinions, every so often, you're kind of going on the same path, and then other times, you're diverging, you got different, you know, different opinions, you got hired for, you know, elected with, for different reasons, and you're all, you're going to argue your position. And that's fine, that's, that's a healthy, that's democracy in action. So to get things done, we've got to somehow get everybody in alignment. We've got to get alignment on it, we've got to get consensus, we've got to get organized. And what we see when we walk into these projects is, you know, sometimes you see, you know, some confusion on it. Most of the time, it's misinformation, because we've learned that if we can present you facts, facts, and if you, if you see, you know, and actually know the facts, so you're, when you're asked a question, you have all the information to actually make the decision, because that's usually what's missing. Because it's usually you're trying to make decisions on things where you don't have all the information. But it, you know, you're smart people, you got elected, and then it's, how do we, how do we help you do that? How do we go through and make it so you've got all that information? So that's our job, that's how we view our job. We need to position you to make, you know, good business decisions and timely decisions, make them timely. And when we, when you're asked a decision, for example, with an architect, we don't let an architect come in and say, do you want to do this, or you want to do that, without having a price on it. So we want to know, you've got to have all the information before you make these decisions. And then you're going back to where we started on this thing, what it all comes down to is, what does it do with the taxes? And you've got a lot of pressure on it, a lot of pressure to hold that down, because it's a, and also, you've got, you know, a lot of ag land, you've got a lot of people that pay a lot of taxes here. And how do we, how do we find that balance, but yet still meet the needs that you have? And that's, so that's where we, we help out on that, that's our, that's our process on it. And, you know, we sure welcome the opportunity to do a formal proposal, and to show kind of our approach to it, there's a different approach to it, and we could welcome the opportunity to show yours. So, any questions or comments or open up to?
Thank you, Dick. I appreciate the proposal. I think we certainly need to have command of the facts and circumstances, but we also need to be humble enough to realize we don't know what we don't know. And it sounds like your organization or a construction manager could help us understand to know what we don't know, and to turn some assumptions into hard, concrete facts so we can make decisions on it, right?
Right.
So with that, I would ask the members of the commission, do you have any questions
You made reference of 245 projects you've done in the past, approximately.
Yeah.
What percentage of those were justice centers or courthouses or jails?
Oh, I think we could say if we, if we kind of put the public, you know, if you include things that are, like, for example, right now, we're working with Brookings on their police station. And so, you know, I think, if I look at overall, just public sector, public sector, I think last year was somewhere around 40%. And it's kind of, it's kind of gone, it's kind of swaying. We went for a lot of years there, and it's evidenced by, by the age of buildings, there weren't a lot of courthouses and a lot of jails. A lot of these things built for a lot of years. A lot of them were built in the 80s, some, you know, 70s and 80s. So there hasn't been a lot, a lot built. That's why you, along with many other counties, how many jails have been built in South Dakota in the last years? I count them on my fingers, at Fulton County, you've got the new one at Brookings, Lawrence is looking at it. And these are tough decisions, so, so we've been involved in these projects. I don't have an exact percentage on it, but we've, we've, we've been involved in quite a few, kind of over the years.
So how do you involve the public? That's a big part, I mean, informing them and, and so on and so forth. How do you do that?
Yeah, some, I'll get into some of that in our proposal, and knowing that we're competing, I don't want to kind of give all our secrets away here, but I guess, I think the big picture on it is, it's, the public needs to know, they need to know, they need to know the numbers. They need to know that when they look at, if you're debating between two options, they need to know, what does this cost me? That's what they're going to look at. Is it, is it, how much do my taxes go up? Or how will it, how will it, you know, so getting them informed with the numbers on it. And they need to see the process. They need to see the process, so it isn't just where you're just going and going, here you go, here's, here's the building, here's what it costs. It's like, oh, you got to involve them in the process. And we applaud you for having a committee, a citizens committee. That is a, and also, when I first met with the committee, I wanted to know if they all got along, if they're all on the same page, and then I learned that there's some diverse opinions on it, that's exactly what you need. You need to get a committee that, where you get opposing views, have them represented, and then, and they'll, and they got to come together, they got to come together and agree on these things. If they don't agree on it, if you can't get a simple committee to agree, how are you going to get the whole, your whole, all your constituents to agree on something? So it's, we're real big on a committee. Get a committee going and, and have it be diverse. Have it, don't have people that are all in one camp or the other. Get ones that think different on it. Because one of the things we look at when we're putting these projects together is, and all those questions I threw out there, every one of those is a potential stumbling block. So every single one of them. So how do we minimize those stumbling blocks? And a lot of times, it is, people need to know, people don't know that you're paying seven figures to house your inmates elsewhere, for example. And I don't know what you're paying, but it's, you know, it's counted your size, I can kind of do some simple math in my head. And, and people need to know, and we talk about, I'm just talking about jails, because they're a little easier to understand from a, from a public perspective. It's not like a hotel. Hotel, if you've got 100 beds, you know, you can, you can, that's what you get. With jails, you got classifications. And how many classifications are you going to have? I just recently read a story about one where it was a, they didn't have the proper classifications, they had an individual that had murdered somebody, or was accused of murdering somebody, and somebody else who was in for a DWI. Well, the guy that did the murder, that committed the, or was charged with murder, he somehow got the grab bar off the wall of the restroom, in a common restroom area, and took it and beat the guy to death that was, just had a DWI. I mean, you got to have classifications, got to have it for, and also different, you know, groups that don't get along, and, you know, female, male, you know, and figuring all that out. So, and the public needs to understand, public needs to understand some of these just hard realities that we have, have to deal with. deal with. So when we talk about the number of beds, it isn't, it isn't like a hotel. We're just like, how many rooms do we have? So they got, they got to have an understanding of, I use that as an example, just of, of some of the public education that needs to happen. But at the same time, you know, I, I can say this to any county, your taxpayers aren't going to pay for everything that you want and that you need. It's, it's not going to happen. So then, as, you're trying to figure out, what, what, what do we do that's the best decision that we have based on what the needs and the wants are? And one thing we do in the, the design process, we really work hard at deciding, what are the must-have needs versus the nice-to-have wants? Because, you know, I recently built a cabin and I really, I, I really wanted a three-car garage. Well, you know, I got the facts and I understood what it was. Well, you know what, I'm happy to have a two-car garage. So, you know, that, it's, it's the same thing. I mean, you're all, you know, you've got your wants and you've got your needs. And we help kind of sort that out. And, and then also get it so the public understands. So the public understands that you're being responsible for their dollars. Because that's, that's what you're hired for. That's why they elected you. And they, they need to show, you need to show, and, and not as a show, as a showpiece. You need to let them see the process of the struggle that you guys have of trying to figure out, how do we make a good decision here? And it's, and have it so it's not political. It's about, these are the, these are the needs and this is how we're struggling to figure out how we can meet those needs. And so that's kind of how we do the, do, I'm going to answer questions on the, on the, with the, you know, citizen involvement. But we think a committee and then do public, public open houses. We don't, we don't recommend having something where you get up on stage and, you know, present it because it ends up to be, we've seen those where you just about have people throwing eggs and tomatoes at people, you know, or you've got someone who's real vocal against it and can kind of turn the whole crowd against it, which isn't what we need. What we need is, there's people who are going to be against it and we understand that. And there's people who are for it. But what they need is to have, be educated. So we'll take, you know, for example, take a room like this and set up some boards of the different options and have people come in and educate them on it. And because the, the biggest thing is voters, they're going to vote for something that they don't understand. They need to understand, you're going to have your, you know, 20% or so that are going to, like they say, you know, that would vote against motherhood and apple pie. I mean, they, they just aren't going to vote for it. But you've got that, ones in the middle, and most people, what they're looking for is, they, they just want to know that, what do we have to do as a county? What, what do we have to do here? Where it just doesn't make sense to not. And that's what we've got to try and find.
Dick, you bring a, excuse me, go ahead.
I would, I would just like to comment that I appreciate the efforts of our courthouse committee meeting that we met last Tuesday night. The information that was presented, I thought was very good. Information that really every resident of Lincoln County should hear. And I commend Commissioner Aaronson Schmidt and your efforts, along with the courthouse committee, some of them which are here today. I think that's a step in the right direction. Good information. I streamlined it, watched it. That's, that's what our public needs to hear so they can make a, a decision.
Well, I'll follow up on that and say, Dick, you talked about a viable, working advisory group. We have that. Very committed citizens that devoted time and energy, willing to travel, do all the necessary groundwork to come up with some ideas. They're going to be the ones that lead this whole thing. And yeah, if you were here, you would be very confident in their ability to do that. One of the things that I was impressed with was your team and your team approach. And pardon me for using this analysis, but I had my wife at Mayo for last, or two years ago for some serious things. And what impressed me was their team approach because they had a team of physicians that addressed all the different avenues of what could be part of the situation that she was confronted with. And you have also, because you have the finance, the engineers, the project manager. So I'm assuming that when a project comes to the fore, that team engages in the whole project and comes up and gives you the best possible advice, direction or whatever, which translates back to the organization, be it Lincoln County or be it Lawrence County or be it Brookings County or any other county that you work for. And that approach seems to be that you vet everything out pretty well. And then you also translate that back to the public. So it's an education, that's part of the education process, right?
I often say that if I look smart, it's probably because somebody else is making me look smart. So, that's, you know, that's kind of the reality of, because, you know, you know, no, no one person in our office is an expert at everything. After we've done a lot of these projects, I get so, you know, on the finance side, now I've been around it now my whole career, so I know a fair amount about it. But not, not compared to the guys that do it. They do it, you know, kind of all day, every day. So that's one thing that we bring is, is realizing that it can't be one. You know, having one person, especially, it's one thing on the design and the construction, and that's, I'd almost say that gets to be the easier part. The harder part is this whole, you know, is, is, comes down to the, how are you going to pay for this? How are you going to pay for it? And what, and how do you get accurate cost estimates? Not just for construction, but for all the, the soft costs and how do you negotiate land and get, get it so you're, you know, really being responsible for every dollar? So, that's why we've got the broad team.
Thank you.
Do the commissioners on the telephone have any questions or comments for Mr. Strasburg?
This is Commissioner Landy and I'm just really glad that you're here today, Mr. Strasburg, and very good information that you're providing. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Poppins here. The question I would have at this moment would be, can you give us any suggestion as to what to prepare for, for a timeline in which to proceed? And how long it would take to gather the information, process the information and try to get back to the decision makers that need to process then that information and try to move forward?
I think we'll include that in our proposal. I think, you know, we've got one approach to it. If we have any competitors, they may have a different approach to it. So I'm not going to say too much on that. But I think one thing we do is, we, we want to know upfront, how much time can we get from the committee and how much time can we get from, from whoever on the commission are going to be involved in this? Because the timeline on it is usually as integra. We have a lot of people, we can, we can make things happen. But, you know, this isn't your full-time job. So this is, that's what we've got to do, is kind of balance it. So we're, you know, really using the time that you give us really efficiently and really make it so it's, it's concise. And, and also, this isn't the kind of thing where we go off and, and do this and come back and go, "Here it is, do you like it or not?" It's, you're involved, very involved in the whole process. You're, you're very involved. Because our job is to help you make decisions all along the way. Not just to make kind of the ultimate decision of what, of, you know, are you going to do geo-bonds or are you going to do, are you going to do, you know, capital leaves or a third party? And, you know, that's, that's ultimately the decision, are you going to do nothing? You know, that's, what's, what is the best, best thing? And also, the thing we really encourage on that, that timeline too, is, is, is to do it right. We see these projects, what often happens on it is they're, these are hard decisions. And if you don't have all the decisions and you don't have a streamlined decision-making process, what happens is they can tend to, they, they drag out. But if, if, you know, I, I think if we come here, and I know this, because we've done it enough to know, if we come in, we present you the facts on whatever topic we're, we're discussing, you'll, you'll make decisions. And you'll make good decisions if you've got all well-vetted information on it. So, and we've done the, you know, from where you are right now to where, to get to a, a vote, it could be as little as 75 days and it could be, you know, it could be 120 days. And, and that goes by some of those decisions that you're going to make, you know, legally, can we still use the same architect? Who's an RFP for a jail? Can we use them now for courts? And, or, and also, what, where's the committee at with it? Because usually, to get the committee and everybody going, I mean, it's, it's, we, we run it, we run a pretty tight ship on this thing. We're going to always tell you to get an RFP. When, when Bill called me yesterday about doing an RFP on this, he said, "That's fine." Because, you know, it's got to be, it's got to be an open, honest process through the whole thing. It's got to be very transparent. And, you know, and it takes time to do those things. It takes about 30 days to get, you know, go through the process. We use, for hiring architects, we use the same process as the state uses for contractors. So we, you know, it, it gets posted, it's got question, time for questions. We run it the same way. Legally, you know, as professional services, you don't have to. But, you know, we, we run it that way. And we want to be very transparent. We have yet to have one, anything challenged in terms of the process that we've used. But I think it's because we use a pretty tested process. And it, it is a, it is a pretty well-proven process that we go through. Because that's, I'd say, early on, when we first started Tegra, we learned. And, so after doing it now for a lot of years, we've kind of figured out how to do it. So, and, and the big thing is, so, so the public knows that you're vetting this out. So you're vetting it all out and you're doing a process. So really, if you look at kind of the big picture, what we do is, we manage the process. That's what we do. We, we line it up so you can make good decisions along the way during that process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Strasburg. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time this morning.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dick.
We'll move on to agenda item number two, board action for requests for proposal for project manager. So we'll segue into that. Mr. Golden?
And I would initially ask for an executive session on this one.
Okay. Mr. Golden's asked for an executive session. Is there a motion to move into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-3?
So moved. Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Although yes, I'm going to drop off the call though because I'm commuting and there's other people in the, 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 the.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes. Okay, we're in executive session now. Okay, we're out of executive session and back into regular session. We will continue on with paragraph two on a regular business, board action on request for proposal for project manager. Mr. Golden, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm requesting that the board, the commission goes ahead and authorizes a request for proposal for a contract service manager, owner representative or a project manager be issued. And then we publish as quickly as possible and receive bits.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Golden by the commission members? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I would so move to keep this project going that we put RFP out for a project manager.
Is there a second on Commissioner Schmidt's motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second to issue the RFP. Is there any discussion by the members?
Mr. Chair, I think this is a, a process in which we keep this as public as possible and we entertain any and all individuals or companies out there for what they have. And it's a way to keep the public informed as this process continues.
Yeah, I think Mr. Strasburg made exceptional comments based upon significant experience in his field, and I think those comments stand on their own. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number three, discussion regarding 4-H leaders and potential lease.
I have.
Mr. Chair, I have to leave on the phone just to let you know.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have with me today our Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation President Chad Hazel. Bill had put together a potential lease agreement for the foundation and the county for the purpose of constructing the building out there. I don't know if you want to talk more about that.
Essentially, what we're asking for is a lease from the county, somewhat like what you have at the airport, for us to construct buildings and, and then lease, lease the ground from the county while construction is underway. And then we turn it back to the county, terminate the lease, and then it's the county's building. And we're hoping with this, it'll help us streamline construction, be able to take advantage of, oh, people that want to donate their time or some, you know, things like that. And move the process along a little bit. That's where we're at with that.
Chad and Wendy, thanks for being here today. Appreciate it. Where do you think things stand right now to that end?
Right now, the construction costs are coming down a little. With that being said, we're short, we, about, about $50,000 for the first building. With us being able to go out and search for builders that, you know, obviously are going to follow planning and zoning codes, all the engineering rules and everything like that, but be able to build it maybe on a little cheaper just because they're not going to charge us as much because it's for 4-H instead of it having the county name in it. So, yeah, right now, we're, we're short about 50, but we're still hoping to be able to have something going out there this summer, so.
Good. So you're expecting, hopefully, to spades in the ground by summertime?
We're hoping, yes.
When you say the first building, what is the first building you're planning on?
So the first building is a 60 by 120 by 16 high, essentially a pole barn. They'll be used as the show ring, that's where the bleachers, the fashion show, that kind of stuff will happen inside that building. Basically, the center of where everything happens at the fairgrounds. We're planning on putting up the barns where the cattle and the pigs and everything are stalled in, in a progression here down the road.
That'll be kind of surrounding this central facility, right?
Yep.
From what I, from drawings you, you know, dreams you've had, you know?
Right.
Whatever they may be. But dreams do become reality sometimes.
You know, Chad, does, does the fairgrounds have any drawings or renderings that maybe it could, we could, you know, shop around or show the public or kind of what your vision looks like out there?
I believe we do. We, yeah, we do have, we do have some.
Okay.
Not here.
Not here and we.
Not today, of course, yeah.
Ones that we've been able to have someone do on a, on a limited budget, so.
Sure. Okay. Does John have a copy of those? Okay. So we could, we could work with him to get that.
Chad, is this the area where the dirt is moved currently, right now?
Yes, yes. Yep.
So. You look like a typical contractor scraping the dirt off and all this other kind of stuff.
It, it's a dead out there.
Well, so do we need to put, well, first of all, are there any other questions or comments from the members of the commission for Chad or Wendy on this issue? Okay, well, hearing none. What would like, what would the commission like to do with regard to the proposal outlined by Mr. Hazel there?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would, I would move that we would allow or enter into an agreement with the builder or the group that we would lease them ground based on the same format that we do with our airport. And that they would have that for X number of years. I don't like, they could determine that. And upon termination of those times, it would become the property of Lincoln County. And I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, and would you like Mr. Golden to draft up the lease for us to review?
We don't have a lease yet, do we, Bill?
We have worked on a limited rough draft. Can finalize it here real quick and give it to you at the next meeting.
Very well.
Mr. Chair, yeah.
So as part of your motion, you'd like that presented at the next meeting?
At the 25th, I think, is our next meeting. Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion to have a lease presented to us to that effect. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, what exactly is the motion again?
I'll second it, Commissioner.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Gibbon, to answer your question, I think what I'm understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Schmidt, is that the motion is to have the state's attorney draft a lease agreement in the manner outlined by Commissioner Schmidt for us to review and then vote on at the next meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other further discussion on that motion? If not, yes?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt, you said that it should be based on airport leases. Is that the farm leases?
Well, it's the same concept. I mean, it's the same concept that we would lease it for X, and it becomes after a certain number of years, reverts back to the county for their ownership. But that's on the same principle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or clarification needed? Okay, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, so at the next board meeting, we'll have a lease to review. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate your time today. And we will move right into the 4-H annual report with Wendy.
All right. Okay, so this is just our annual report for 4-H for 2021. We had 10 clubs, one in Beersford, three in Canton, one Harrisburg, four in Lenox, and one in T. Our active member enrollment was 242 with 48 registered volunteer adults. For our numbers on project areas and youth in action events, I put the last five years so you can get an idea of how the numbers were compared to previous years. As you know, in 2020, things were upset, and we did virtual for a lot of things, or exhibit numbers were limited. So for comparison's sake, I would have you look more at 2019, and we were close to returning to 2019 numbers, or exceeded it in the case of Fashion Review on this slide. 4-H also offers judging and Skelethon opportunities for members. As you'll see, dairy cattle and horse have had no participants in our county in the last five years until 2021, and then we had some interest from those kids, and they all did very well at their state contests for horse and dairy, where our junior team won the dairy contests, and our junior team was third for horse. So we've had a little more interest in there and continue to advertise that for 4-H members. Looking at our county livestock exhibit numbers compared to 2019, livestock numbers at the county level were up in beef, dairy cattle, poultry, rabbit, and companion animal. You can see where our other numbers were a little bit down. Meat goat was close to normal. Sheep was above last year, but still not to 2019 levels yet. So in 2021, we had four members participate in dog practices with Minnehaha County. The reason we have been co-op with them is because we do not have a dog project leader, and they do. So this fall, we started a special interest club between the two counties, and we host practices in our facility in Lenox. Minnehaha does not have a place they could do it during colder months. So we have a place, but they have the coaches. So we have gone together to offer dog for the two counties together. In rodeo, 4-H rodeo has been a project member for a long time, but rodeo appears to be becoming more popular in our area with 17 members last year competing at the regional rodeos around the state. We have a handful of foragers from Iowa for the rodeo project because Iowa 4-H does not offer 4-H rodeo. Okay, in regards to static exhibits, you can see from this year, we had 661 exhibits, which was down compared to 943 in 2019. However, speaking with other counties, this sounded normal for this year. I don't know if it's just people trying to get back into the flow of things after COVID, so we'll see how it goes again this year. But in this picture, you can see on here, we arranged our exhibits differently this year in our new space. The lighting in the building was considerably better than what we have had before, and the layout worked out nice for people to go and find exhibits. At the state fair, we were down more than 50% because the state limited everyone to four static exhibits per person with a total of 12 exhibits at the state fair. So this means some people who would normally have brought static exhibits to the state fair did not because they were exhibiting livestock or participating in youth in action events to meet their 12 total. Livestock, at state fair, we had 108. Again, members were limited to four animals per species and up to 12 total projects. So last year, we only had 80 exhibits. Because of COVID, they limited to two animals per species. 2019, people could bring 10 total animals per person. The reason they went to four animals per species this year was because of limited space at the state fairgrounds because that open class beef barn that burned down, they have not been able to replace that yet. And that doesn't sound like that'll be replaced and open until 2023. We had some notable livestock achievements in our county from beef and companion animal, dog, poultry, rabbit. We had the overall champion rabbit in the state for 4-H, which was pretty exciting for this young lady at the bottom of the page here. We also did well in our youth in action events. Lincoln County had the most contestants in Fashion Review at the state fair, and four of our members placed in the top five in their age division. And if you'll know, three of those are cousins. Shooting sports, we had 42 participants in 2021. We have 55 currently enrolled for 2022. We are, we had eight volunteer leaders last year, and we are at 10 this year. Shooting sports practice began just this Sunday with members, so they are shooting BB gun, air rifle, air pistol, and archery. Junior leaders, we restarted that in September. So this group, we kind of had halted because of changes in the office and COVID, so we just got them restarted again. It's open to 4-Hs 14 to 18 years old. This group picture is with the Cottonwood County Minnesota 4-H ambassadors at the East River Foster Parent Network where we did a community service project December 30. That, the Cottonwood County 4-H is actually run by my sister, so we teamed up for that. And then we're going to get together with Minnehaha County junior leaders on this Sunday at our building to tie blankets. We held a recognition event in November. You can see our friends at 4-H are John Hanson and Tom Henke from the county. 4-H Family of the Year was Andrew and Ann Bowden from Beersford, and Meritorious Service Award was to Brock Hartman, who has been a longtime shooting sports coach. Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation, you just heard from Chad, our officers remain the same. We added Brady Duxbury, the Lenox FFA advisor, and Trent Thompson, a parent, to our group as well. We had our second annual Raise the Roof fundraiser in March of last year. We're planning our third annual Raise the Roof again for March. We've received at least $18,200 in grant money toward the project. We had our second annual Craft and Vendor Fair in November. We're thankful to everyone who has given money to the foundation to help move the building project forward, and as of today, the foundation has raised more than $170,000. But keep in mind, so that, there are things earmarked in that amount of money that can't go towards the specific building. And here's just some fun facts about 4-H from the state office. Four times more likely to be involved in community service, like these two pictures here. The top one is Dakota last season Rangers made blankets for project warm-up in Sioux Falls, and the bottom picture is Christmas ornaments that Trophy Trotters made for the Lenox nursing home. This is kind of small, but this is our grounds usage for January through December. I updated you quarterly on these, so, except for last quarter. So October, we had club meetings. Lenox Boosters had their event that had gotten moved from August. CFEL had their brunch, and we started dog practice that month. November, we had recognition event. CFEL had a meeting. We had the vendor and craft fair, and then we had the East River Rabbit Breeders Show. In December, we had club meetings. Lenox Sunstrom used our facility to sort their FFA fruit because their shop was still not fixed from the tornado, so they used our building for that. And then we had dog practice, and we had a winter project day. And since I like Betty White, here's my quote, but are there any questions?
That is a fantastic report, Wendy.
Thank you.
It certainly, I think it shows, especially with the numbers and the metrics you have in there, it looks like we're bouncing back from some pretty significant public health issues that have been going on with COVID. And it looks like we're trending in the right direction with regard to participation of our kids, right?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Is there any other questions or comments for Wendy?
The fun facts, that's good stats, good information there about those that are involved, success rate afterwards in 4-H.
Yep.
And did you, did you pick up some additional individuals with your target? I noticed it was advertised in the paper by January 1st, they were supposed to unwind online.
Yep, we've had a lot, I don't know what the numbers are, but we did have quite a few new people interested in shooting sports, and I know we had some of those people sign up. So I can't say which ones are new and which ones are old people, but...
Do you participate in that shooting sport, Wendy?
I don't know anything about the shooting sports part, except I can tell you what they're doing right now, and how the building gets set up.
How about archery? Are they still pretty good, too?
Yep. So they'll practice every Sunday now, from this past Sunday through the middle of April. So they'll be using that west side of the building through April, so.
Are there any number of requests to rent the building for activities, weddings, et cetera, things like that?
I know we have a graduation in May, already booked the building for this year and next year. We've had an interest, I'm not sure where we're at, from somebody, I think it was for a family gathering, but I don't know when that was planned for because I've had them visiting with Jessica. Otherwise, I know that rabbit show has theirs already booked again for November. We'll have another Raise the Roof event in March, but...
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Harold Timmerman, approve and authorize execution of the signature sheet for the first quarter of the local emergency management performance grant.
Good morning, everyone. This is just the normal quarterly report that I have to file with our state office to get our LE MPG grant money back to the county. Acquire a signature by the chairman, vice chairman, or the vice chairman and the auditor. Any questions you might have about any of that?
Is there a motion to that effect? Or does anybody have questions first?
Approximately how much money is that?
On an annual basis, I'm guessing it's about $48,000.
I would so move to have the, our chair, our pending chair, sign that agreement.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you.
All right. Travis, approval to advertise for the 2022 annual supply bids for the highway department. I assume you're taking over for Terry this morning?
Do what I can.
You bet.
Big shoes to fill, but I'll see what I can do. Yep, so we're going to, want to go to bid for our 22 annual supply bids, cutting edges, weed chemicals, all the normal stuff, year to year.
Does anybody have a motion to that effect?
I don't. I'll so move, Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve and advertise? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Okay, agenda item number seven, Travis.
2022 spring load limits for Lincoln County roads. Just looking for approval from the board to authorize the chair to sign this request.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second to approve the spring load limits for our roads. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Motor Carrier Services request for Lincoln County roads.
Yep, so this is the one to approve and authorize the chair to sign the request to the Motor Carrier Services to enforce our spring load limits.
Those are the ones that pull you over, put scales underneath, and...
And they're not a cheap fine.
I'll so move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second. Send a request letter to Motor Carrier Services for our Lincoln County roads for the 2022 spring load limits. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, looks like we've got a request from your department there, Travis, to permission to purchase a trailer approved in the 2022 budget. What can you tell us about it?
Well, with the ease of everything else, I think we can slide this one, too, through, right? I mean, everything else has been going pretty fast. We, we had budgeted for 2020, approved in the 22 budget for a new trailer. And I believe our budget line was at 14.5 for this trailer, but due to rising costs of materials and everything else, the quotes that I have here are considerably more. The lowest bid that we did get from Luden's Trailers in the amount of $20,750 for a trailer. Next one was from Prairie Wind Trailers for $24,000. I had reached out to Butler Cat also on one of their trailers, and we were in the ballpark of $25,000 to $30,000 on a trailer. Lot of this stuff, too, that we're finding with trying to purchase equipment is quotes are only good for a certain amount of time, and it's, and that's if they can even guarantee the price of when the trailer's built, or any other equipment as well.
Travis, are these identical trailers, the one first for 14.5 and now for $20,750? Are they perfectly identical or same weight carrying and everything?
Yep, yep, specs are identical on it. The only thing we have here falling into that group of, hopefully, a quote will last for 30 days or last till April. This, the one we have here for $20,750 wouldn't get built or be here until April. Currently, right now, Luden's has a trailer that is set for delivery in February.
Yeah.
And that price on that trailer is $20,950. Only difference on that trailer is two foot longer. So for $200 more, we could lock into a price in February and not have to worry about any other rising costs that we may incur out till April.
And your primary usage for the trailer is what again?
Hauling skid loaders, culverts, yeah, hauling heavy stuff.
So we'd have a choice of taking ones that Luden's currently has for $20,950, which is deliverable now?
In February.
In February?
Yep.
Versus the one that if we did, the seven, $20,750 isn't even, they haven't lit the torches on that yet, right?
Right, wouldn't be till April.
Okay.
Is there a motion? Do any of, excuse me, do any of the members have any further questions for Travis?
I don't.
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a motion on the agenda item.
Well, I'll move that taking what Travis had told us today, and being able to have the usage now of taking the... of taking the trailer bid from Luden's for 20,950.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion and second to purchase a trailer from Luden's for 20,950. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Motion passes. Lincoln County just bought itself a new.
A new trailer.
All right, agenda item number 10, Toby, you help us out with this.
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as west half of northeast quarter, except south 247.5 feet and west 24.75 feet thereof. Section 22 Township 100 North, right 49 West, from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of the area of joint jurisdiction. Location is parcel ID 10049221020.
Good morning, Toby Round, representing county planning. The applicant owner for this item is Tom Winker. Location, as you can see on the map, is approximately two miles southeast as the crow flies from the city of Sioux Falls. The applicant, or the parcel size is 71.14 acres. And the purpose for this application is for a residential subdivision of 25 lots. The applicant did submit a preliminary plan with the application. The preliminary plan identifies the lot and block layout for the 25 lots. Access is achieved off of 270th Street, which is an unpaved Springdale Township road. Water will be provided by Lincoln County Rural Water. And the individual septic systems or onsite wastewater systems will be the, the means for sanitary sewer on the property. Staff did, in their initial staff report findings, identify that the application was not consistent with the conference of plan. Primarily, the future land use map identified this area as future rural area. This is outside of the growth area of the city of Sioux Falls, as well as the goals and policies identified, identify that the property should be continued to be utilized as a rural or an agricultural property. The property does have one building eligibility remaining on the property that could be utilized. The preliminary plan is, as long as with staff's findings, both planning commissions met last month, and both planning commissions unanimously recommended denial of the application, as well as both bodies unanimously denied the preliminary plan application. You have set the second reading public hearing jointly with the city of Sioux Falls for your meeting on the 25th. That meeting will be at 7 o'clock in this room. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Toby, what was the rationale for both commissions, our planning commissions, to deny?
Again, I think of the staff analysis identified that this property is outside of the growth areas of Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls has tier one, tier two, tier three. So this is, you know, beyond a 40, 50-year development scheme. And so the other aspect is that, I'll go back to this slide here and take a look at this one. As you can see, is, there is some rural residential to the south, but there is no surrounding this. So again, from a staff perspective, this would be a spot zone for a rural residential at this time. As well as, I think, I think the, the neighbors that came to the public hearing probably adequately summarized it better than staff when they said, you know, Sioux Falls can grow out, but, you know, do we want them to jump out here and then to be part of this? This is quite a rural area here. There is an existing feedlot or cafo to the south of this property here. There's an existing residential or one single-family residential dwelling here. So again, this area is, is not identified as a future residential area in the conference of plan.
How close is this to Good Earth?
Less than a half a mile, little, yeah. So again, you've scheduled a secondary public hearing with city of Sioux Falls for your meeting on the 25th at 7 o'clock.
Commissioner Schmidt, that's Randy Olson's property to the south of this property.
Oh, okay.
He has a cattle farm out there, and his cattle farm drains into Spring Creek. And he was at the, he was at the planning and zoning committee meeting. He testified against it. You asked what the rationale was. I watched the meeting. It was mostly drainage issues and then some crowding issues.
Toby, the southern part of that property, isn't there some wetlands as well? Did I read that?
There's a wetland on the north part of the property.
On the northern?
Small, small, yeah, small wetland, yeah.
Mr., so it drains into Spring Creek, has he done no hampering or any, no barriers or no?
Well, Mr. Olson's property lies on a pretty steep piece of property. That's why his land drains into Spring Creek, because he's on the, the abutment. This piece of land, we'll have to get more details during the actual public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Need to go visit.
I'm just reiterating what I heard in the planning and zoning meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Toby. Okay, number 11, transfer surplus Ford Explorer to the office of the auditor.
On January 4th, you surplus the Ford Explorer from the sheriff's office, and the auditor treasure registered deeds could use this vehicle for their out-of-county travel that they have to do. So I was hoping that we would transfer it just to the auditor's office, and then we would maintain it.
You've heard the request.
I'll propose a motion to approve to get us started.
I'll second.
Got a motion and approved, transfer the surplus Ford Explorer to the office of the auditor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Thank you, Sherry. Agenda item number 12, approval of the 2022 employee holiday schedule. Sean, could you?
I will call.
Alert Julia that her presence is needed.
I have a question, Sherry. This Ford Explorer now, is this the one that has been used by the police department? And does that have some extra horsepower and some speed things?
They put a governor on it for me.
Do you want to ex?
Okay.
Commissioner Schmidt, do you want to exercise your oversight duties and take it for a ride?
If I could be by myself, but I don't know if I want to go with the auditor.
Well, here's what we can do. While we're waiting for Julia, it appears that agenda item 13, we'll move on to that. Clarification of cost of living increase for the command staff, and that is also her issue.
She is on her way.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, we're going to move on to 14, because I know Jeff is here.
Yeah.
Number 14, closing conference with legislative audit for the audit ending 2020. Jeff Schaefer is our guest today.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Jeff Schaefer with Department of Legislative Audit. We've finished the fiscal and compliance audit for year 2020 for Lincoln County. The report's final, and it's, and it's ready to be released. We have provided to you a management letter that outlines anything that we might discuss with the board, governing board. And if you look at the second page of that, you'll notice that under the items of any deficiencies noted, that there are none, that we have nothing to bring to your attention that we thought was important enough to bring to the governing board. So that's kind of what we have. And if you have any questions concerning the audit, I should be happy to answer them. But other than that, pretty short and sweet.
Well, thank you, Jeff. It sounds like Lincoln County's audit control process gets clean bill health this year.
It, it does.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll go back to agenda item number 12, approval of 2022 employee holiday schedule.
Good morning. My apologies for the tardiness. I had someone in my office. Over the last year, the commission expressed some interest on setting the holiday schedule ahead of time for employees for planning purposes, for, to plan for them and their families. So I just wanted to have a brief discussion. It seems as though, Carter, would you mind placing this key lender on the screen? It seems as though the only real question that I have for you for the upcoming year would be what you would like to do for or around the Easter holiday. In the past, the commission has been supportive of giving some time off on the 15th, a half day or potentially a full day some years. So I think based on how everything lands, that's the only question that I have for you.
Julia, can we take a step back for a minute before we dive into any one particular holiday? Are we adopting, or have you proposed the same schedule that the state offices use?
No, in the past, that was something the commission was supportive of, just strictly following what the state does. And then, if I remember correctly, a couple of years ago, the commission decided that you wanted to follow your own schedule, just for other purposes, you wanted to make your own schedule. And so we changed the handbook accordingly to say, you commissioners can do as you please. You will take that into consideration, what the state does, however, we won't follow it date by date.
Sure. I do think we owe it to our employees and the public to come out with, to have, to spend some time this morning on a discussion, number one. And number two, to come out with this in advance. So thank you for being here this morning. I do think we need to take the time to do the proper planning this morning to figure this out.
Sure.
So if you could just walk us through what the days off are going to be, you know, just start at the top of the calendar.
Okay, sure, of course. So currently in policy, what we have here are 11 paid holidays that the commission has previously approved, and these have been in the handbook for the last couple of years. The commission has been supportive of deeming these as holidays for the employees. In addition to that, the commission's been supportive of giving additional time off. For one, the east, around the Easter holiday, and then also around the Christmas holiday. But how the dates fall around Christmas this year in 2022, I don't know if that's something you wanted to consider as it falls on a Sunday and we have the Monday off. And so going back to this schedule here.
Do we normally, and I just, I'm asking because I don't recall.
Yeah.
Because I'm mixing our calendar with the state's.
Sure.
calendar. And the reason I follow the state's calendar is because of the courtroom closure issue. Do we observe weekend holidays on a Friday or on a Monday?
So if the holiday falls on a Saturday, we observe it on that Friday. If it's on Sunday, then we observe it on Monday.
After the fact?
Correct.
Okay.
Typically, yeah.
Okay. What's the request with regard to Easter now?
Well, I don't know that there is a quest, request per se. I'm just looking for some direction from the commission on what you'd like to do. Historically, the commission has been supportive of giving a half day or a full day on Easter Friday, because there's mass and things some people like to participate in. That's up to you.
Has it been a full day, or have we always looked at Good Friday at about a noon dismissal?
Yeah, I think the last couple of years have been noon.
I think we, we talked about that as being, you know, and then you're saying, since it's on, Easter is on a Sunday, Easter Monday would be closed.
That's up to you. We don't currently have Easter in our handbook, so right as it stands now, we don't have Easter Monday off. But I bring this to your attention because historically, you've been supportive of giving that half day on Friday, that Good Friday.
Yeah, I think the exception to the rule to the Saturday, Friday versus Sunday, Monday rule here is Good Friday, right?
Yeah, because we don't observe Easter.
So Good Friday could be a full day, and Easter Monday would be a regular workday.
That's up to you, yeah.
Well, I was looking at that, if you were to, you know, Easter is a holiday. We don't recognize that as a holiday?
Uh, no.
I don't believe so. It's Monday, so interesting.
I see June 20th is circled in yellow up there. What's the significance of that?
Yeah, so my next point of conversation would be Juneteenth has been recognized now as a federal holiday. And it's my understanding that other like entities are now deeming that as a holiday for employees. So I'm seeing if that would be something of interest to the commission. And then the holiday is actually on the 19th, and so if you follow the same practice, it would be giving the 20th off, if you'd like.
You said it's a national and state holiday currently, no, or just?
Correct, yep, a federal holiday. The state of South Dakota does give that date off, yes. Is the bill, it hasn't been approved yet, but they gave it last year off, correct?
I believe that was an executive order, yeah.
Okay, yep. So I stand corrected, however, they did get it off last year.
Can you shove it up so we can see October, November, December? Yeah, thank you.
Sure. So the two questions I guess I have are, would you like to give some additional time off on the 15th, like you've previously done? And the second question would be, how do you want to handle Juneteenth, which is the 20th? Or which would be celebrated on the 20th, if you would like?
Well, let's take Easter first and say that in the past, we've given that Friday at noon a closure so people could attend their, their church or mass or services that they would so choose. And that the 20th, we set the last year, we took that off, correct?
What date?
And the 20th, June 20th?
No.
We did not.
No. The, the state did.
The state did, yep.
It's a federal holiday.
We had no dis, no discussion over that last year.
So what's the feeling on the commission on the 20th? Do we know how many other, how many other counties have taken that off? We didn't have any idea, do we? We, the lone wolf, or are we in the majority, or what? We don't know.
Typically, the state, are you talking about April, the Good, Good Friday?
Yeah.
Typically, the state does, I know.
Yeah, at noon or the whole day.
I, I can't remember, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd still favor it noon.
I know what our county has done, and it's typical to have a half day.
And that would be a paid holiday then as well, if we agreed to that?
Yeah, that'd be a full day. But it's a half a day, they take off. Some people have closed at 2:00, some people, I mean, businesses at different dates, but you know, when you're dealing with the public, maybe closing at noon or 1:00 if you, if you want to accommodate the public.
Are you talking Good Friday or?
I'm talking on the 15th of Easter.
Well, I can, I can support half day on Good Friday.
I can too.
Yeah. I'll just leave that one. But the 20th is in question.
So it sounds, if I'm understanding right, you want to do a half day on April 15th? Okay. Great, and now the 20th?
Yeah, I, I just don't have enough information about June 20th. I mean, I, I pulled up the office closures here for the state of South Dakota and it looks like Juneteenth is recognized. I mean, I know what the holiday is, I understand the significance of it from that point of view. It's new, newer to South Dakota. We're obviously a northern state that came into the union a little bit later. And it appears from looking at the calendar date here that Monday is off for the entire state of South Dakota government offices for Juneteenth. That you're understanding too?
Aminah County adopted it as well.
Sherri, when the, when the state is shut down, how much business can the county do excluding what the treasurer's office does or register of deeds, for example? I mean, if you got to conduct business for license and all the rest of that, it's not available or?
The auditor's office isn't based on the state, so we, it doesn't affect us, but I think it does affect the treasurer.
Treasurer.
I wouldn't be able to speak on it, but yeah. And I don't know what the registered deed does with the state, but yeah, if they're closed, they, there's certain programs they can't get into.
Okay.
Well, you know, Commissioner Schmidt, I've always taken the approach that I, I think we should just mirror the state of South Dakota. That way it's predictable for citizens as well as employees, family members, whatnot. We've already deviated from that for Easter because I think in this county, there's a strong tradition of doing that. So that's kind of the, you know, how we do things down here approach, so to speak.
Well, Commissioner, I can support you on that because I, I think that it warrants probably that kind of respect in some ways. But if the state of South Dakota has deemed it that way, I, to me, I like to follow the state as, as you do. I, I think it's a consistent policy for, for us and for the citizens to be able to recognize too.
Gentlemen, if I may, I guess I am going to be in a disagreement on that facet and forgive me for my voice, but the state in the past unfortunately has not declared what day they're going to be closed. And then too many times throughout the year, we've had to discuss if we're going to mirror after the state has, on short notice declared a day they're going to claim as a holiday. I like us, like to stick with what we have on the schedule and there are departments that can function without the state. I would just as soon stay open. Thank you.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Poppins?
I would offer that motion. We'll see how it goes.
Okay. You've heard Commissioner Poppins's motion. I think if I understand it correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, you would support the half-day closure for Easter but stay open on the 20th, correct?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay. Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adopt the holiday closure schedule for the county and the deviations that are briefed here as we will close at noon on the 15th of April in observance of Good Friday, but we'll stay open for the 20th, which is recognized as Juneteenth. Does everybody understand the motion? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
And just one clarifying question is, would you like me to put that in the handbook so it's ongoing because that's typically been our practice? Or would you like me to bring it before you every year? Would you like me to put the half day for Good Friday in the handbook so that we do that every year going forward? Or would you prefer that I just bring that, that this item, I bring it forward every year?
I think we'll have that conversation at this time next year, Julia.
Okay, bring it forward. Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then there's another agenda item here, and this is the last one, clarification of cost of living increase for command staff.
Yes. Last year, you were supportive of giving the same increase to the command staff as you do those in the union. So I'm just looking for some clarification as if you wanted to make that exception for those individuals this year or what you would like to do.
What's the current practice?
Well, typically because they're not part of the union, they would get a 2.5% increase like general population or general staff. But last year, you were supportive and wanted to make an exception to that to give the command staff a 3.25% increase to mirror what the union had. So I'm wondering how you want to handle that this year.
So if there's a 2.5, so what is the fiscal ramification of 2.5 versus 3.25?
Oh, including SDRS and taxes, we're looking at 2, 3, $3,000 or $4,000. It affects four people in the sheriff's office.
Is that the only office for the sheriff's office, Julia? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, yep.
They're talking about what, 2.5 or 3.5?
Well, it's a difference of .75.
Okay.
Four individuals.
Can I interject a little?
Please.
The, the reason this is being brought forward is, is when the pay raises came out, the command staff noticed that they weren't on there. When we, when they negotiated the union contract, we had agreed at that time that the command staff would mirror the union to avoid compression. So our sergeants don't catch our lieutenants. So this is a, I mean, it was budgeted for, and I thought it was automatic because of what we discussed last year. Quickly learned that it's not automatic. So, but it was to avoid compression. I did budget for it and it's minimal expense to the county to keep that, to avoid that compression.
Yeah, I'm remembering the conversation from last year now. I think it primarily had to do like what the sheriff is saying to keep the leadership from compressing with those that they supervise. I, I recall that.
Those of you on the commission on September 29th, 2020, any, any other thoughts that you can remember of why or the decision was made at that time?
Well, I think the issue was, for example, you could be on the command staff and a lieutenant could be supervising a sergeant, and if you run the numbers out statistically, the sergeant could eclipse the lieutenant over a number of certain years if you don't keep up with the cost of living increase. So for example, you know, you could have a situation where those that you supervise are making more money than you are. Now, you know, just that in and of itself is not the issue. I mean, that happens all over state government. I mean, the governor makes less money than many other people in state government. I, I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue comes in when you're talking about retention and recruiting of law enforcement officers and certain ranks and, and grades like that is where it tends to become an issue then.
I think that, I think that's well spoken, Mr. Chair. And I think that in this environment today, with employment being at, trying to find adequate number of employees and continually facing raises far beyond anybody ever thought we're getting, I would move that we do give our command that necessary, what is it, Julia, 3.5 as we're talking about?
3.25.
3.25?
Yep.
That would be my motion.
We have a motion to provide the command staff in the sheriff's office with a 3.25% cost of living increase. Is there a second?
I guess I'll second it for some more discussion if there is any.
We have a motion and a second. I mean, from my point of view, I think I'll stand on the comments I just made. I mean, I wouldn't offer it for the reasons that Commissioner Schmidt gave. I'm going to want to offer it for the reasons that, yeah, I just talked about with regard to recruiting and retention and making sure you don't have sergeants eclipsing lieutenants. Because I think you get into some, I think you especially get into some recruiting issues when you get into that. I don't want to get into a pay raise arms war with every county around there because if the rationale is just, well, that's what the people next to us are doing, we should do it, then we will spiral into some kind of public entity salary war and competition. And that's just not how you budget in the public sector, unfortunately. But I am going to support it for my own reasons.
And you said there was a difference about $3,000, is that right?
Roughly $3,000 to $4,000, yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk?
I would hope that.
Yep, go ahead, Commissioner.
If I can, I will support this motion, but I, in light of what Commissioner Schmidt spoke of at the times, I think we're doing a disservice to our, rest of our employees and should revisit what raises we did give them because this is not just a sole issue for that department, but it's an issue for the whole county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions or discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. I don't see Bill here. I think we've taken care of our executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can we grab a hook and ask?
Yes, please. Bill, is there any further need for executive session?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn at this time.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Thank you, we're adjourned.